Wait, call the meeting order at seven thirteen. Uh we can go into non-public session at any time and this will be tonight under I don't.
Uh A and C.
And C, okay. Um I'm gonna open the floor for public input at seven thirteen. Anyone wants to do you want to speak now?
I'm happy to.
Okay.
Yeah, uh my name's interesting. Uh my name is Anthony Pancyo, I'm the director of childcare services at the Southern Missionary Y M C A. Uh I'm just here to say thank you to the school board and everyone who's kind of poured into our program and our staff over the last year and a half. Uh we were really fortunate to open up, uh I believe March of last year after COVID. Uh I appreciate the patience and understanding and especially appreciate the partnership that we can work with the school um to help students to set them up for success. You know, we had a really clean handoff with the school at the end of the day. We know what kind of uh space the kids are coming in mentally. We understand, you know, they're able to communicate to us, hey, you know, students may have had a good day, a difficult day. It allows us to help the students feel welcome and make sure that that transition is eased because that can be a really difficult time for kids. Uh and one of the biggest, you know, partnerships that we have is just around space, I think. You know, when I think of the important parts of our program, having consistent space um in Kensington and all the partner and all the schools that we partner with, um allows us to keep the costs of our programs down, making sure that it's not just a program for students and families that can afford it, but for all students and families. It allows us to offer over a thousand dollars a month in uh financial assistance to our families to make sure that our programs are accessible. Uh and the schools have been so wonderful about helping us identify potential families that they need them, so we can reach out to them. Uh so thank you so much to everybody over the last year and a half that has been able to welcome us um into your space and uh create a program for students and families that feel welcome, so. Um I also apologize, I'm gonna be scooting out up against bedtime for my own son. And so I promised I would be home, I gotta make good on that, but really thank you guys from the bottom of our hearts. Really looking forward to working together going forward and happy to report registration is cruising for next year in Kensington. So we're looking really uh really good for a helpful program in the fall, so we're looking forward to being back and I'll just.
Good question for you. Um are you aware of our full day um like teacher inservices and where you guys potentially be
Of course. Yes.
like providing full daycare maybe on those days?
Absolutely, yes. So we did, we did go over that.
Oh, okay. Alright, cool.
We do offer uh, we open up registration for in-service days beforehand. Uh this year we're looking at opening up in the beginning of the school year, so parents can plan uh and kind of get their foot in the door for that. Historically, we've offered it at Camp Lincoln uh because it's just a bigger space with a broader variety of activities that we can do. But we're taking a look at kind of how we uh organize ourselves for that because the registration hasn't filled up this year. We haven't run a program on all the in-service days because we only get a couple of students that sign up. So we're kind of looking at how we can alter that to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the community and kind of putting it in the space that people can access. And so we hope to run as many as we get signed up for next to come next year.
Okay, cool.
As Kensington teacher, thank you for supporting our families as well.
Yeah, that means a lot. Thank you guys. I think this, the partnership means a lot to us, so thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you guys. I was appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The kids already signed up.
Oh my gosh, yeah, you can say us, that's for sure. Um the next thing on the agenda is met. Any changes, additions? I don't know if vacuuming anything, Chris, no, it's okay.
I didn't have anything.
I don't know.
Okay. Um I can make a motion to your presidencies as written. Second. I'll figure it.
Fine.
Um. Well, you want me to jump down to business and financials? For the manifest for you guys. Alright, so in your packet is the current year financial. So we scrubbed and scrubbed and scrubbed to find more money. Um so we did have fifteen thousand uh additional expense from last month, but I also updated the projected reimbursement from New Hampshire. So uh we actually, it's additional, additional fifteen thousand is really a reduction in other areas and the addition of the workshop. Because we added the forty thousand dollar encumbrance that we voted on last meeting. So with that, it would still leave our remaining expense to our appropriation of eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty-one. So I was thinking to be extra cautious because do an additional ten thousand on top of the forty thousand to free up ten thousand extra for options. Any questions on the expenses? So if you wanted to do the extra ten thousand, you just have to make a motion and we can start the process there.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, so my next question, so thank you. Um what do you guys think about if they have the extra twenty thousand dollars? For the options that are to staff me for next year?
What's the risk on the other side of that, Molly?
Well, schooled out, well schooled out tomorrow, so I feel pretty good about what's in here, if anything. Would be relieving more money. And if you do an up to motion, if something comes up last minute we didn't know about or a bill comes in that we didn't know about, if you do an up to motion, then we can reduce it to the amount that we spent. Do you think about it? So up to fifty thousand, in other words? Well, I'd do up to an additional ten thousand over the already approved forty. Oh, up, okay, okay.
Yeah, so building on what we said in the last meeting, so up to an additional ten.
Yes. Yeah. So if an extra bill comes in that we didn't know about, then I'll do what I can up to ten.
Yep.
Because I definitely will be focused. And that's for the downtime that I'm there talking to it. Mm-hmm. Someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm okay with two, I just don't know how to say it.
Um I can make a motion to expend up to ten thousand additional dollars. On the revenue. On revenue.
A second.
And the fiscal year twenty-three. And the fiscal year twenty-three, thank you.
A second.
On there?
Great, thank you. Um did anybody else have any other questions on the agenda just?
Do you need some? Uh we can jump back up to the committee report.
Exactly.
The first committee report is the policy, the policy committee.
The policy. Yep, everybody's favorite.
We'll take your favor.
Yeah. Okay, so six policies to talk about in materials. There's three revised, three new. Uh there's a few that focus on school safety, uh others that are focused on ESSA, which is the Every Student Succeed Act. Now, the first long school safety program is a new policy. It basically is a cover policy for a number of policies that sit underneath it. So you have seen, but then I don't that there's links and the and uh callouts of all of the policies that collectively make up the school safety program. GADA employee references and verification. There were only a few small edits made to this policy. Um it ties in with ESSA, so there were some changes made there, a few small edits to this one. The policy itself speaks to a situation where you might have somebody that potentially had engaged in sexual misconduct while employed at one school. And then if they're leaving to obtain employment at another school, um we don't want the second school ever learning of or ever not learning about the prior misconduct. So this procedure sets out the guidelines to be mindful of uh under those circumstances. And then JCA, change of class or school assignment, best interest and manifest hardships. This is a revision. There's also a withdrawal uh that's called out here for JEC. The reason being, this new policy combines best interest and manifest hardship procedures. So the way it works is that if a parent is uh looking to uh have their student uh move either classes or schools and there's, they're making the statement that it's in the student's best interest, they can make that request to the superintendent and then the superintendent can either approve or deny. And then after that, say the superintendent denies and that goes back to the parents, the parents are able to file on what's called a manifest hardship. So both of those two separate policies are now combined into one.
Okay.
So that's why there's a request to withdraw uh policy, JEC. And then moving down to dangerous weapons on school property, really just some cleanup revisions here. It's not new, but it's more of a format change. You'll see that there's some separation uh relative to guns and firearms and then other weapons that are defined under state law within the policy. And then the last two, so title on family and community engagement. This is another one that connects in with ESSA and provides uh some of the guidelines to consider when uh family and community engagement is present. And then the last policy, conduct on school property, for the most part uh you know, this, this is building off of a New Hampshire state law. A lot of the information in there is really around trying to uh call out what conduct is on school property and highlighting the fact that any action taken to use an object or injure, intimidate, or harass or coerce another person is not necessary. Any questions on those or other movement to Kensington?
Are any of these new? It seems like they're all just versions or like they think they're the same things though.
There's, there's. Yeah, the first one's kind of a cleanup that was technically new.
They're different. Yeah.
Exactly. The last one, conduct on school property is new.
Okay.
But it's just kind of tying into the future state law.
Okay.
Um. Uh the other new one is best interest and manifest hardship, technically isn't.
Oh yeah. Yeah, okay.
Now, there will be another, there's supposed to be a meeting on the calendar to go over any bachelor policies tomorrow.
Okay.
So guessing that we have that meeting and then we're not bringing these policies back until, yeah.
Um so we need to make a motion to approve these.
Okay.
So just going to talk. So I will make a motion to approve uh as drafted policy EBV, policy GADA, policy JCA, policy JICI, policy KB, policy KIA.
On paper?
Right.
Uh okay, good. Um safety and security, we have not met since the last time. So version evaluation meeting?
Yes, yes, we met on the top.
Okay.
Um we discussed closing out the evaluation of Dr. Ryan and moving forward with the evaluation plan for Dr. Ozbell. Um the plan is to have Dr. Ozbell's goals to her by July or August so that she can bring them to the garage and join the fourth in September to be approved. Um we're meeting next Wednesday for a goal setting workshop, so that will start on the next week.
Okay.
Um and then what they wanted from, from us is they're asking each councilor to share what they want to see, both for goals for Dr. Ozbell, doesn't have to be anything specific, just broad topics.
Okay.
And then also in non-public, we'll have to do a discussion of how Dr. Ryan's goals were met.
Yes.
So those who get to uh the feedback that they wanted me to bring.
Yeah. Thank you.
Kensington school study, um doing that's great.
So we met um June seventh and uh a lot of different topics were discussed. Um it was kind of a, a wrap up for the year with also some ideas for the next school year. Uh newer programs were discussed, uh Community Day, uh was likely, which is on Thursdays now, it's most likely to be Friday afternoon, which will allow teachers to meet with the new SAU um curriculum coordinator during that community time. Um which will be really great for the teachers, um because she's such a huge asset, so that'll be a great place for them. So they'll have a type of cycle that they get to meet with her. Um so Community Day's still going great. Um another program, Wellness Wake Up, um that's also going, you know, really great. Everyone's really happy with that. The only change there is they're gonna assign to these, to the teachers, um just to make it a little more equitable. Uh we have also discussed um this interesting study done by a Boston College professor, Peter Gray, about the educational value for students of that movement time. Um basically focusing on the idea of play and how that really helps kids um get into a creative work to learn. Um so it's a nice confirmation that that Wellness Wake Up is a, a great program um for the school, so that is nice. And uh big ideas happening for next year, the promo, which we've talked about before, the permanent sub on staff and then the change from half days to full days for professional development. Um and then just some other, oh the, we sort of went back to the original goal of the group, which was what can we do better for students? And within that, the goals of collaboration time for teachers and flexibility for project-based learning. So going forward, we're gonna keep those goals in mind and will continue it on the next year.
Thank you. General correspondent? Um the communication, the community engagement review?
That's the, it's the fall.
Okay. Community, oh right, community news mission, oh yeah.
Okay.
We'll go back for a while. Okay, is there a deadline for that?
Yeah.
The next one, I don't know, with Kensington?
Yeah, the.
Yes.
I think it's August.
It was guest, I think. Is the next deadline? For the fall?
Yeah, I'm guessing August. I can let you know, we, we usually get that reminder to submit something.
Okay. So in the past, we've submitted something, it's on the board. Uh I don't know if we have any else. Yeah.
What do we do with us? Did we have to do like uh?
Shemmy wrote something, I think, about um.
Just about what we do, like our process, I think, yeah.
Their what intentions, like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of what a board member's role is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um remember, does that tie in with like the, that one pager, two pager, whatever?
Mm-hmm, that we created, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably, um. Yeah, so I don't know if you wanna think about this and have any ideas, um to Chris and someone along the way. I don't mind writing something and I can take two of those, Chris, but.
What is it?
Just a kind of care box.
It's not needed, but usually good, yeah.
I'm sure I got it in there somewhere.
Yeah, yeah. Um it's in line with our board. We make goals in the board as well. And that was one of our goals, was to have a more community, just outreach and engagement and just be more available and approachable to people in the community to understand what we do. Um and so that's in line with that goal, yeah. Um, okay. Uh principal report?
Well, he said I didn't get that to Sharon before she got the packet out. Um so the first thing that I wrote about under positive community culture was our senior service day. Um so we had nine of our extra seniors come back um to help us in the classrooms on that day. They spent um a lot of time with our current kindergarteners because it also happened to be kindergarten orientation day. So Mrs. Greenwood is busy with orientation day, so it was super helpful to have our seniors on that day to help with our kindergarteners. Um and then our seniors returned then on that following Monday to run our field day stations, which would have been this past week. Um it's a, it's a nice tradition that they get to come back and help facilitate field day for the little ones, so. Um and then they also dig up their time capsule that day, um so it's also, it's, it's nice to see them come back because at that point they have already graduated and they still choose to come back even after graduation. So it really is very, very telling that it's an important tradition to them to come back. Um under health and wellbeing, I just highlighted some of the work that Ms. Eskelen is focused on um in the classrooms this, this past month, being mental health awareness month. Um so kind of thinking about how to talk with kids about that at appropriate developmental levels. Um obviously her conversations with kindergarteners and first graders are very different than what she talks about with fifth graders and she's mindful of that, but just to start conversations with students about emotions and experiencing emotions and um what we do with those emotions is what's most important. Um and then under meaningful learning, I was highlighting the Kensington celebration of learning, which I think maybe everybody in the room went to. So when I wrote this, it hadn't happened yet, um but it was a really, it was a huge success. Um I think uh everybody that walked by um was like, I've learned so much about Kensington today and that was really the goal for the kids and also then sharing their learning. Um and I just think it was um a nice community coming together experience um for, for everyone. So I don't know, and you were all there, if anybody else wants to add anything to about the celebration.
The kids are just so excited. It was so cute to see them so engaged in learning about the topic that's so close to home. Sharing and cross grade, it was fun to go into the other grades where we don't necessarily have kids and see other kids learning too, so.
There were people in town who haven't been in this building in decades that came and were just so amazed by everything. It was really neat to see. And that was the one feedback Alison was that they wish there was more time so they could see everything from all the students.
Yeah, I know, I didn't, I, I saw the rehearsal, but I didn't make it up to second grade into the range to see their performance, but.
No, I didn't either.
Uh yeah, my, my wife was there and we heard a lot about the Grange Hudson for weeks.
You learned things on grades you never knew.
Exactly.
Yeah, I wish I had more adult bodies than me because I was trying to jump from classroom to classroom.
Oh yeah, there's so much to see and do.
Um it was, one of the dads, um uh one of our newer dads, the younger student, um said to me that day, he said, wow, do you do this every year? And I said, no, actually, this is our first go at this sort of school-wide celebration. I said, this was one of those um kind of dream, a new dream for teachers, if, if we could do something new coming out of COVID, like what would, what's something we would want to try? And so this was sort of one of those, let's try this. Um but that also meant we had to give up something else because we couldn't just, you know, add. Um but this was one of the new things that teachers wanted to try was the school, school-wide um celebration of learning for Kensington. So I think it was a great, a great success. Um and when our teachers dream new things, like they tend to go really well, so. Um so that's what I have under those. And then I know also under the Pinto Bulls report was to talk about our staffing projection for next year. And I know that's why we have all of the um, you know, extra people in the audience.
So many of us.
Well, there is one of them, we're being.
Little way.
Yeah.
Um so I know there's been a lot of conversation about um our enrollment at different grade levels and um thinking about the needs of the kids and how do we best meet those needs given the staff that we have. Um so I've been asked to share the um projection for what I anticipate um the staffing will be at each grade level. Um I'd like to keep in mind at this point, we're not gonna talk names, that sort of thing, but just, just talk about like numbers and staffing, that sort of thing. Um so I anticipate next year in kindergarten that we will have two teachers in kindergarten. We will have two teachers in first grade. We will have one teacher in second grade. We will have one teacher in third grade. We will have two teachers in fourth grade and we will have one teacher in fifth grade next year. So that is the staffing plan for next year. Any questions?
Yeah, if you have a question, go ahead and ask. It's really not all that formal.
Is, so that's the recommendation that needs to be voted on? No, that is what's happening.
Yeah, I believe that's the, the decision that we're moving forward with.
Oh, okay. I thought we were still in the conversation, please. So two teachers in fourth grade, one in fifth.
Which affects both of your children.
No, that's why I'm, I was here because I'd heard of the different ideas that were being tossed around and I wanted to hear the rationale for looking at absolute numbers in terms of one class being larger and one being smaller, but when you dig into those numbers and you look at the individual needs of the children.
Yep.
One class has heavier needs than the other does.
Yep.
And the plan that you put in place helps address that.
Thank you.
It also takes into account our last meeting where you approved for uh a kindergarten and also to help out the group. So we'll have two additional staff members that will support aides in, in those rooms.
Yes.
And then we do the extra ten thousand to help to ensure that that forty thousand.
That's enough.
Yeah, we talked about, we talked about additional options, like bringing on a potential new full-time um teacher, but you know, this year with the budget constraints, we had to make do with the other options that we had to work with. And, and that was, you know, just the, the additional money wasn't there. And there wasn't really a good means to go out and get it, so um it wasn't like things were very close and we had to make kind of a difficult decision. It was pretty uh, you know, pretty clear. So the, like what we voted on tonight gives us some extra wiggle room. And what we voted on last time was just a way to, you know, account for the numbers and create more space budget-wise and financially for the, you know, to make that option happen.
One thing community member brought up to me, which I thought was interesting is just kind of, and I don't know where this kind of falls, but is there a way, and I'd be interested in looking at other districts and if they do it differently, of gathering information? Because we didn't know about this kindergarten class and maybe it's just a fluky thing for this year. Um but is there a way to kind of gather that information? I know you, you all do some stuff on your end, but I don't know if there's anything else we can do so that if we had a heads up earlier in the budget season, we could help to budget for another teacher if this bubble is going to continue to happen?
So yeah.
And again, it's like, it's not an, it's not answerable question, right? But it's just, it was an interesting thought brought up.
But I can give you some feedback with three different boards.
Okay.
Each board is dealing with kindergarten numbers increasing. And, and so we do look at projections based on students, families we know that are coming in and then students for preschools that we work with.
Okay.
If students go to private preschools and they don't reach out to us, we don't know about that. Or if it's new families, it's their first child, we don't know about that.
Right, you just move there.
So in two of the three communities that only have singleton grades, you know, when you start getting towards that twenty-four number, which is the cap for kindergarten.
Yeah.
You don't know, you can project and then once you get the actions. The other district I work with, they have three classroom teachers, so they can, they'll update, you know, two or three, four, five different kids a little bit differently than us, but that's how, that's the projection.
Okay. Yeah.
So this, this year in all three of those school districts, within SAU sixteen, it was higher than we projected because of those reasons.
Okay. Okay.
When does the budget get set for the next year? Like October, November, December?
November.
Well.
Yeah.
Well, the pub, the public hearing is in January.
The public game. Yeah.
So that's the first time the public sees it outside of the board meeting.
And then we voted in March, right?
There's a little less session that you have, you're going to go to the polls in March.
So is there any kind of census that can be done with like the town or like an early, almost early registration of like?
Yeah, and you move registration up earlier and knowing that if you're a current resident of the town, you are required to register your kid by October first and then if you move into town later, then you can register later?
I think registration is open. I, I don't think we can close our registration because of um being a public school. I, I'm trying to remember when we sent our first letters out to the kindergarten, to the area preschools. Because we, yeah, we send letters out to all the area preschools, like all call for Kensington.
Yeah.
And I, I, I don't know when those run out, maybe December, January, um.
Okay.
I mean, it's during the budget season, but not before the budget season. So I mean, that's something we could think about doing in the fall.
Right.
A little bit earlier, but they do kind of.
Put that in the community newsletter.
Oh, that's a great list.
Thank you. Now I honestly.
Thank you, Chris.
Um that'll be out for the fall before budget season.
And it just, I mean, they've really just kind of trickled in over the last few months.
Yeah.
You know, we're still getting new registrations just the week before orientation, so.
Yeah. Certainly something.
Yeah, as I guess as early and as in many places as we can get the word out, the better.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like next year, I already know of like ten kids and.
Well, I have my list, it's called the incoming littles. This is the name of my list.
Whoa.
I can just add to that spreadsheet.
Many of them coming from a boy.
Yes. I don't have any next year.
And some are new, yeah.
Yeah, I think this year orientation, because you were there this year, I think we had about a fifty-fifty mix.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, a girl and boy.
Um, no, I mean, about of new, totally newbies and.
Oh, the new families.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was, yeah, but it was so many, but there was a lot of like already previous versus, I feel like Cam, Cam and Tucker's grade was a lot of news.
New, yes, that's, I think, probably the most popular.
Yeah. Yeah.
Very weird.
Yeah.
So yeah, I agree that earlier we can get the word out, that's not gonna hurt.
Earlier, yeah. So I'm gonna think about maybe that letter going out a little bit earlier. Because we do a lot of our budget work in the end of the year, and so it's ready to be seen in the beginning of the following years. That's what makes it a little bit tricky.
Can I do talk about um like the openings and hiring, not necessarily who you're hiring, but like how is that going and or is that something?
Oh, for new staff?
Yeah.
Um.
Replacement staff?
Yes, so um.
Should I do that now or into personnel?
Uh yeah, well, let's go, we can, let's get there, um.
Yeah, we have.
Are we, we don't, do we need a, we don't need to vote, do we need to vote? No, okay. Um. Yeah, new business, right? Do we want to jump down to personnel?
Certainly can and circle back.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, um so personnel?
Yeah, yeah, I want to check, an email that I got today, just because I don't want to make an announcement if um somebody hasn't officially been onboarding. Um because it hasn't been be public yet, so um just give it. I'm sorry, there's a lot of emails I haven't checked today because um.
I'm a little busy.
It's been a busy day, but I know that there's an email in here and I just want to see if um.
Okay. Okay, that's what I thought.
I don't recall.
I know she's met with Heather. Okay, um so yes, we have hired um um a new uh first grade teacher. Um and she was actually, um she met with Dr. Ryan, I believe, on Monday, and then she was able to come on um field day just to start meeting some of the kids. And so she will be um um here for step-up day tomorrow morning. So um students will be able to meet, we won't make specific assignments for teachers until later in the summer, but she'll at least get a chance to um unite the the incoming kiddos. Um we have hired a new art teacher as well.
Great.
Um again, I don't, I just, I'm not sure if all the onboarding is official, so I don't want to like make a public announcement on video if um that hasn't actually.
That's totally fine.
Yeah, that's great, and it's still like coming.
Yeah, that's huge, yeah.
Yes, so that's lovely, um she's wonderful, so I'm excited about that as well. And um um you know, we'll make that transition here in the art room. Um you know, Susan's willing to 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 stay and we, we, we'll, we'll make Susan stay for a little while um and just to to make that um transition, which will be great. Um and then we're still in the process of hiring a new music teacher, so that's one position that we haven't wrapped up yet.
And now you can go ahead with, uh the position's open for par professionals, the additional.
Um yes, so we'll be able to move forward with finding um additional par professionals as well, as well as the permanent sub position has been.
Oh.
Um posted, and I've had some conversation with a few people um that are familiar with our building um about that maybe being a good match for them.
Okay.
Great, so I'm optimistic about that as well.
Um the only other thing in a personnel's letter.
Is this news to me, that somebody resigned it? I don't know.
You want to set it to us?
Um um I'm sorry, which, um. Oh, that one, sorry, I, it's been a long day, I apologize because we.
We couldn't help you because we don't have any information.
We are, I am very sorry um about that, okay. Um yes, so I received um a letter of resignation from our um primary case manager, um Brooke Demer. So she has um accepted a um, her passion is V C B A work. And so she has accepted a position doing um full-time V C B A work, which is really her passion. And so we have, we have to support each other in our passions. So um we wish her the very best um as she she moves to her new position. And um so that is also another um position that we're looking for.
Okay. That's right. Okay. Uh so jumping back up to new business, goals for superintendent, we can do that at the at that end, that's okay to do.
So there was two pieces, I think you have to talk about um Dr. Ryan's evaluation in non-public, but also publicly, I think you were looking for some suggestions for staff, our faculty committee for Dr. Aspel for next year.
Okay.
And that we can do.
You can do that in public?
Yeah.
Um yeah. No, it's not, it's not done.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, well, I think more goal, this is a very small thing, um but we did, um we, we have brought it up as a board for several years now, uh is just more presence at at least one Kensington meeting uh school year. Um.
Yeah.
I think it would be nice to have, I hope the superintendent had a finger on the pulse directly, not in certain moments, but. And I think another, again, I think, and you kind of said this is okay broad topics, right, uh stuff? Um and I think it will be somewhat addressed by, I mean, I think it's already in the works of this community engagement, but this this idea around communication, community engagement and improving in that area, I think is really important as well.
Yeah, yep, I agree, that's what I had, just to continue communicating the great work that that S A U is doing. Like in our our last board, that whole D E I J presentation was so amazing, and that would be great to get that out, so stuff like that. Um.
I don't have Dr. Ryan's goals in front of me, but are there any transferable or I think we should consider bringing all of it? I think those are both.
Yeah. Uh the the um portrait of a graduate thing. The, let's see, uh the, yeah, indiscriminate Tory practices and systems. So like that's, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about this later, that's that sort of already been in place. Um communication, that was one of the goals. Um. Working with the Department of Human Resources to develop a short-term plan for filling current support staff vacancies and a long-term plan for retention of those employees. I don't know if that's something that's still um.
I think staff retention and wellness is a huge um area. I think right now in the field of education, we're using teachers like Crease. Yeah, certainly Mr. Stirk, but um I think it's important to look at and address as a superintendent, we should process, take care of.
Yeah. Oh, and last one was the transition, so.
Okay.
I don't, okay, this is great, I think it's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um and then the school board meeting dates, you looking just for us to approve those?
Yes, that what we have right now, it's it's basically the same for this year, so Wednesday.
It's the same, okay. Second Wednesday, that's the. Yeah, let's see, I think it's like. Okay. Make a motion to approve the Kensington's board dates for two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Second.
Okay. And new business?
No, no.
Okay. People related matters?
Nope.
Okay. And. Okay, is that it, I understand?
That's it.
Okay, um so, oh, but I, we don't adjourn, right, we go into non-public.
Yeah, we just need to close public comment.
Okay, I'm gonna close public comment at seven fifty-two. I don't know.
Go first.
And I can make a motion to go into non-public under the A and C.
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you. Uh I'm gonna make a motion to approve the recommendation for the administrative contract recommended by Dr. Andruski.
Certainly.
All in favor?
I am.
Thank you.
Oh, and I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn at eight fourteen P M.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?